I pray to house the poor Nigerians. What would you do to protect this grass, especially for vulnerable people? Women, those living in poor communities, people with disabilities, and those currently internally displaced Nigerians? So we start from the center of the room, and then we go ahead. We start with the story. Please.
In that particular... In that particular section of Nigeria, on the stock market, a major event. And that is, that right is not accessible. You cannot go to court to sue the Nigerian government. They are not home. So that is why, as the Nigerian government has informed the government related by military and force on us, what we need to do is to make housing a right for our people in the country. This is on the purpose of investing shelter, that every Nigerian citizen was entitled to be placed to live at head of night, a home. And we have made the investment. And what I propose to our government to do is to put aside 3.6 billion dollars. And maybe we should pawn this something into a construction site. We are giving hands. And at least, Nigeria doesn't have a hand. We are a little 70 million on over 80 million Nigerians as we got on the world, including the city standard. An average of five Nigerians should be entitled to have a father in moment and this should be peace. And in moments, we do that. Then we're talking about all the chapters of our position that we have here. It's the right of shelter. Without making an investment, without building homes, without making policies, I'm not talking about mounting or any of our policies. Look, I want to tell you, Nigerians, that the rich, the 1% of our population already have two million houses. So my very own shelter.
Thank you. So we start with the right of housing, protect the rights of vulnerable Nigerians, like the house.
Hello. Good morning. Yes. Okay, very good. Our high government will protect the rights of our citizens to adequate housing and pursue a very aggressive policy of social housing, number one. And that will be achieved by making sure that we bring innovation to housing construction. One of the challenges that will always arise with the wishes of any government is asking how much does it cost to build a good social house? So the only thing they need technology, the ministry of science and technology will be asked to develop materials that will develop social housing at one third of the half of what it is today. That's number one. Number two, we will need to make a decision as to whether we need to pursue social housing in terms of expansion across the land or moving up. Because you have to think forward. Number three. Number three, we have to have a serious policy about slums. We must improve our slums. Not seek to eradicate them so that they can't come. New residences can be working and resorting to our park. Resorting to our park. But we need to bring adequate water and serious challenges to slums. As the Rockefeller Foundation says, if you do this, the shack becomes a house. Eventually, the slum becomes a suburb. Thank you.
What we, what we need to do is we will embrace social housing as well, but we will regenerate these slums. By regenerating these slums, we are not going to embark on what it is presently where they will remove people and snatch their houses and their pension back. When we are going to regenerate, we will relocate them and then give them the false right to refuse to come back. Because they are already in that community. If they want to live in that community, they should be allowed to do so. And we will also innovate in serious technology where, and innovate to subsidize housing. Because, let us disagree. The key corporation that cannot really afford the houses, no matter what you think, even if you build two bedrooms or more bedrooms, it is still not going to be accessible yet. So our government will care about certain amount of money, and we will decide to like to get this money from. Because we will take the money from shopping, resourcing, or in the pocket, through security programs.
Well, I'm happy to see a Nigerian on the planet, that such a position is not an option. And that's very good. So I hope we all agree on that.
So... The number one... The number one thing... The number one thing that we have to understand is that housing is a important part of African people's architecture. And so the major thing to do is to ensure that people have income that the level of strength to be housed or go to bed house on the long term and sustainable basis. So, and the economy that the level of improvement they come is fundamental. Number two. Is that in the development and design of social housing, we must understand how the right policy triggers a stronger participation of the private sector in the position of social housing. Number three. Number two. We must look at a strong environment from the aspect of economic corridors. If we look at them as economic corridors, it completely shapes the way that we treat the poor, who are co-located in environments that are even better than to be achieved of a sustainable development. So, my final tip on this is to say that tackling poverty is hugely powerful, according to research, to what we do with housing for the poorest segment of our society.
As I said at the beginning, the first thing we're going to do is to prepare the sake of emergency housing. And with that, we will also have what we call a national emergency housing project to the tune of a trillion naira which totals about 3.6 billion dollars. And the second thing I want to do is to ensure that we have a policy built around something called SISA, connected social responsibility, meaning that we understand that housing is not just a government's property to solve, it's a societal problem that needs to solve. So we're going to see how we will find and inspire the private sector and the organization to work together, eh? The practical example we're going to talk about was something that the government did in Nigeria, in a time of bushy border. Something they remember that. Um, it's a project where we mobilized 20,000 people to pay 200,000 naira to buy houses in a bushy places where they couldn't afford to pay themselves or leave that place. And because of that, very helpful. The third thing I want to do is have shelters. And those shelters are going to be places where one person can go and stay for one night if they are going to be part of a civil organization program. So if you are going to be part of a civil organization program, you have to pay, you have to stay for one night. For that, you are going to be able to earn your way out of being able to stay there for one night. Before they go to any sort of sea or a sea park so that they are able to lie down on the beach and they will really get it. So that's one of the most important things. The last one is new cities. The first thing is... Okay, thank you very much. Uh, for those of you watching online, we have four hashtags, housing markets, town hall meeting, hashtag town hall, and CDHSD on the store, Unilever, which is a Twitter account. Okay, great. We'll move on to the one challenge that is also considered a important part, which is housing finance. Today in the country, various mortgage properties are consciously promoted by both the government and the private sector. Okay, so we already have, um, the federally responsible board, we have the government of Nigeria, and the private sector, the national mortgage banks. But we all know this, mortgage still remains a mystery in the country. In other sense, there is a systematic problem. So as the president of this country, how can we develop a mortgage system that capture our local realities and statistics, especially the state of the deficit that we all know? So abstractly, Professor Molela.
Thank you. Um, as deputy governor of Senegal, I am Nigerian. I approved the license of Nigerian mortgage refinancing corporation. It has not a few clients, but not only. As president of Nigeria, I encourage a policy shift. The problem with mortgages in this country is that the only people who are getting them are those who are already rich. The mortgage system is not addressing the lower middle class and the poor. So, we are going to have to add more capital for mortgage refinancing in Nigeria. One of the ways we are going to do that, I propose that the new development bank of Nigeria should be completely changed in terms of its money. It is doing something which I believe that the 1 trillion naira venture charter from my proposed should do, which is investing in small businesses. That new development bank of Nigeria should be like B and B years in Brazil. It should be the mega development bank for the country and have a first client charge of the council of the premier. Part of what it should be doing is to be funded refinancing of mortgages so that there can be signs of subsidized mortgage support for poor people in the society to be able to access affordable housing, not just giving mortgages to those who are upper middle class and working here. So I will take a more socially responsible approach to mortgage financing in Nigeria. It doesn't exist right now. It's a game of the upper middle class. Thank you very much.
One of the things I would never want to do as a candidate is to raise expectations that ultimately will not be realized. Because it's important to realize. So, the first thing that I need to say is that there is a huge argument in the housing conversation that the market can take care of. And we must identify the second thing that we need is subsidization. But the subsidization not done in a way that is market efficient. So the work that we will do in terms of refinancing is that we will shoot policies that will enable refinancing and refinancing in the way that the market is still being expected for the volume of business that is possible by targeting the people who are in the bottom of the pyramid. What that does is that it is first entry into the sector by cactus that was planted on the way to find a way to reside. So, the dividend of our country's financial sector, especially through the cactus market, is going to be tied to that opportunity that the private sector will see in housing where they love it, up next, to efficient supply. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The big question in the room is that you have 40 million residents from the city, you have workers who are falling in hate. And what is spoken about is an advice on workers to be able to afford a house. What I want to do is to increase the salary of an African worker minimum in the country. And every year, 30% of salary can be vested back into a market economy. And you are feeling well with the mortgage. And listen to me, they're all about the mortgage. You can let my analysis be mortgage for a lot of people, like a commercial that you're sure to source where the private sector can use to manage. You can go for a vacation after you get several mortgage loans. This is not a business that and we drive around here and I have a better idea than you can to set this up. No body is talking about the time in Nigerian masses. So that, they can, we are legal to take mortgage. If you hold a federal mortgage back on a Nigerian, they will not do that, they will ask you to never come up there in your country. We have a policy where you can provide mortgage for low-income workers. And to facilitate this, please, this is given a minimum wage as a minimum wage. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, before, because it's a political issue I'd like to address to each of the viewers. One, the federal office of Nigeria has much requirement, why not a particular of me and after me of them, has the normal requirement for assessing mortgage loan. And then, you know, and then secondly, and that is a fact that we're improving the minimum wage of the overall. My worries have not been resolved by the government. Sorry, 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 if you have time, it's okay. But I don't know if it's too late to stop it because of the...
Because the usual inflation is something that have been around to prevent workers from getting their income. Because you use the expression, what was the initial cost by all the, you know, subsidies products that are 6.2 billion dollars or 2 million?
Please, let us remember the house rules. There will be time for us to ask questions again, hear them, preach like a pastor. But for now, let's continue to maintain their culture again, be honest what they have for us. Now, we remember that the West Bank of which I guess may have had a greater impact who are also in the way that started the chaos of some time. So please, let us remain in the room while I can.
Thank you very much, uh, Saya Fira. All right. So just to bring a reminder to the question is how we make mortgage financing available to all? That's the essence of what this is. And in a sense, cheaper mortgage financing. Many of the seniors are here, I mean, co-cabinets, and I used to open that out of fact that a specific portion of what it is that we have, that the players in the market they are who already can afford mortgage financing. So there must be that part of the... I said, connected social responsibility, which for most companies will come as corporate social responsibility. So many of the companies today are really the perfect candidates of social responsibility, social responsibility projects. We're going to be asking that many companies ask for, to invest in social housing. And we will provide matching funds from our national emergency housing project. That also will then work with what I call diaspora funding. We need to get the diaspora to apparently earn enough. And thus, they're looking for ways to save their funding and also have a sense of belonging in Nigeria. To have protected housing in estates that will provide infrastructure, will provide power, will provide water, and all of those and ask them to invest in those protected houses so that they are able to do so with little or no stress about having to build themselves. So, the two things, the last one very clearly is that we have a stock of empty and abandoned buildings all across Nigeria. And we have some people estimate in the region of 100,000 empty buildings. We need to, to create a policy that says, if nobody claims those buildings, I can say, you will have a finishing cost Nigeria will pay for them. Thank you very much.
If one of these guys is married for a year, we're going to those who are asset there. So, even for the environment that is a disaster in order to uh, the mortgage system is still ongoing. So what we are going to do, I'm not of the, I'm bitter and I know how to do it and we are not good at it. But the second approach is our... This system where I am using uh, what's each economy doesn't work. We are doing the financial economy. Our banks, our faith, this one is woven in the great circle. And that's why we see how in all the markets, people doing positions and have opportunities. What we will do, we will incorporate it into the mortgage system where the professionals in bringing in your students, etc., in funding to others. Because the pride of the Nigerian is to go to home. And it doesn't take, it just try in bringing it systematicly. We need to work with it. The children that we are trying to bring is suffering. Our people are dissident. And government is not listening. We are not listening. We will do it so that the citizens and the people wanted is what we are going to do. So that everyone can take pride in going and building it in a way that they will have a path and to feel it within 3 months or 10 months or 20 months, where the banks will be for social...
Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next question we have of the standings is more practicality. Those research and research shows that if you're operating in government test in public land. And so people don't think about the process, we are feeling stressful. And then, there are so many agents who are doing the same thing that want to get confused as to what to do. How would people about to rely on the process? That's one. And the second one is, how would you synergize the activities of various ministries and agencies of government that are invested in various industries of housing value chain? So, I start from, do you want to start? Yes.
A control of every particular activity must be completely visioned. And it's the benefit of that vision is equal to the rest. The latter to a... And the latter to a bigger number which share the vision of dominating our business capacity in every year, starting year 1 with 250,000 houses, year 2 with 500,000, year 3 with 400,000, year 4 with 2 million houses. Meaning that in the first four years of administration, you're committing the senior construction of 3.75 million houses. Now, the thing is bringing everybody to the table. Saints, locals, and the government. Especially with the development agencies. To come and say how we each and every one has to pay in actual life as a whole. Especially when you sell what you would call the real defense on the economy. When, when you call out everything that you have to wear the private sector to build, uh, set up factories and all of those kind of things that need to... So the first one, in sharing, and getting all the agencies involved, is set a goal. The second thing is we must set a positive goal that says whatever application we set to within 30 days it must be resolved. And that protocol, they can first say. So every application must be resolved within 30 days. And then, everyone must fire a long wish card of how we got off. And that's the end of it.
This is a very... This is a very unique question that I ask. Uh, being the central bank working in the service of housing reform itself. So I know exactly what you're talking about. The problem, which was, uh, maybe 50% is a new deal after promises. But the biggest problem is, as I said before, Nigeria is not accessible. This is because not every man in this country has been surveyed. Not, therefore, for somebody that wants to buy a this man, he's not entirely sure what he's buying. That's what we see. Just one of the investors telling the this man is getting here. So, what do the ordinary man do to a project? It's that they... And what that company can do is is donate their... People who need to take anywhere is go many stories, catch up. Instead of go many to encourage the stakeholders to have those who are conscious ahead of business. So, many of you are building in need to pay a land or a new a quick anywhere to destroy that is going to become a suck and a defeat because the necessary facilities are not done for us. And it was all taken out of the smartest try and do smartest and it's a defeat. Thank you.
In 25 years, the national housing fund, which is part of the, um, national mortgage, the federal mortgage bank, has only been able to give us 70,000 houses in 25 years. Now, this is a fact, in a fact, a...
Now, this is a fact, in a fact, it is a spectacular failure of political way. Let me begin that when Johnson Day was gone from Nigeria's side, who saw what he was able to do with us in the sixties. When Fashallah was gone, there was some, this is another area, so it's really good to see that some of the professionals today have been one of a super minister of our player for, um, very possible mandates. The first thing I specify for Nigeria is about separate housing for those other mandates and maybe housing and other development. Number two, all the institutions in the value chain, I don't see in the current housing in the past, which one has a strong regulatory role over the union standard and the system and must make sure that house policy is effective. The property is, the government is, okay, the government is on office, the government is on service, the government is on office, the government is on office, the government is on office, and the government is on office. Written, written, all this is a problem. Making sure that government is in charge is integral, helping the government to handle is a problem. That is a problem for the government of our time for the world of priorities, what are the major offices of our president?
So, um, the, the problem of too excessive bureaucracy and regulation is what the housing sector is going through. And so the most important thing is acknowledge. The most important thing is going to be to get the data that tells us where we are in terms of this over-education and. But just don't talk too much, we'll sit in the back of the car. So we know that it takes right now 21 days for the processes of registration to happen. We know that it takes about 270 components for the entire garment of what we need to do in transfer of items and things like that to happen. We have to set process acts, one. Number two is that there is something called blockchain technologies. What blockchain technology is doing in terms of digitization process is unbelievable. It removes too much human interaction and therefore since the housing sector from the middle of that we see in the bureaucracy process that is in the value chain. And then number four is that they connect it to between all that we know with housing to the wider economy will also help us reduce the duplication that happens in the value chain. So we look to a housing as an insular sector, we look at it as a competitive sector. Thank you very much.
I, we're running a government that are led into bureaucracy. And I mean, that probably problem in the housing sector is that we also demand documentation. Proper documentation, the process of the documentation, we can almost go around labels and on and on, except you unlock, uh, the documentation of any particular house. And I said to the journalist, so the time a pastor bought a house for a prostitute, I mean, and I was trying to find the documentation. And I'm going to find it and then use everything I can, he said you have to see somebody, somewhere, before you can get documentation. The reason is that nobody wants you to know what's going on in this country with regards to how houses are built, who owns houses, the move of a house you have in Nigeria owned by just a few people. And we also have to have a transparent land registry system in Nigeria. In Yobe, that was how, as I recall that I was able to catch a lot of thieves because they have essential land registry. If you know they are threats, you know they own our house and how much they pay for their house and how much they work. We have to be able to do that in Nigeria. Without this, we can't even start a plan. And don't forget, would you respect, I thought geography and plan that universal basis? And after we've gone out. And my goal is that as president, we will return this country completely from paper and have people that are forced to digitalize. Yes, digitalize, sorry. Thank you very much for telling the story. Still on governance issues. Now, Lagos state is the economic hub of here as well. And it was the Federal Capital Territory until 1991. So the last significant count, federal government, land and land property properties in the states, today, these properties are banned off. And they are total ban of billions. If you let me first say that, how do our office facilitate the release, reuse, remodel, remodel and redevelop of these properties in such a way that it creates the national housing star? So I'll start from, oh, okay, okay, let's start.
The reason that I want to go with this one. Can you find out who is handling this microphone? The, the thing I wanted, I wanted to focus on this is that this was an issue that a post on the announcement and this one was already done sometime in the administration that I was at. One thing that relates and is sent for the next administration to abandon our policy progress. Because that has another problem, what I will do is to not even waste time. So the first thing that we must acknowledge is that our total budget now, 2020, it's just 10 billion, 10 billion dollars. There is no better than we have, so the budget of the New York State is starting. So we need all the resources you can find. Therefore, there would be any kind of sidebar, we getting the diagnostic on the existing houses of the federal government in Lagos and immediately doing a compassion program for the private sector and public use of the kind that ensures higher productivity of energy for our country.
Thank you very much. I will not give any more of a public institution to private sector. Yeah. And what I'm going to do is to do an inventory of what's next, of federally owned properties in Lagos. And the ones that we can convert to schools, we convert it to schools. The ones that we can convert to houses, we convert it to houses and give them back to workers. I would love to convert the federal secretariat to a hospital. And yes, this is actually the porridge and visa. The federal government of Nigeria is a whistle government. We will convert it to private use. You are going to end up in the hands of our ministers, governors, party leaders, national leaders of some of these political parties who are based in the country like Dakar and in Lagos City. We don't want to give any more of our private properties to be used by Nigerian people. And if you don't have enough space to take care of our social needs, we can't give any more of our properties to the private sector. In fact, I would dream that now you can get all the things that I was showing to them as the known enterprise back in the Nigerian people.
Like I said earlier, there is a stock of empty, my personal house in Nigeria that has to be moved off. And so they're going to set up a board specifically to look and it should be set up with some of the most repeated people. That could be like something like a shop, exactly what you can around and what is the best news that we can appreciate. Some of that news, like I said, for the thing, hospitals, some of it would be offices. My moment of concern in Nigeria, if you can actually use buildings to develop us, who will be able to rent and rent them out so that we can have returns of the investment that the government has already made to it? So also there's so many people today that want offices, young people that are looking for offices that are cheap and affordable. And then you have the federal secretariat there to go in and it's helped, like, like my boss said, it's filled with corporate entities. Yes, there are people that are looking for offices, they are willing to pay rents on them. We need to make sure that we find a way to commercialize every building, either by renting them out on these levels or on homes. This is what we, so that we can earn money on the return on all the investments that we did in the past. Thank you very much.
My approach to it, because it's very different from the first word I said, I would advise use all the materials they have and use them as upgrade to their organization.
Thank you.
Uh, my approach would be that the president and the mayor will abandon that ground property is in Lagos. That is what should influence what you want to use that property for. We bring in the X parts, some of which should be used for social housing, some of which can be used for private sector development as a office. The combination of the different sides and what round the X side of it. We don't go and build a housing site in the middle of a commercial office development area. So I think the location is a lot of the time you use is the midst of social housing, public use and private sector development.
Thank you very much. Um, we had, so I'm personally in the evening and basically around a lot of social media. We have also had talks from a really many posts from social media and the guy and people that have been sending you questions and comments, so you can always check the hashtag. And so now we are launching up and we just want to give an opportunity to one of the government candidates who is in the house, Babatunde Olalile, Madanofio, Eebe, to say one word, one thing. One is, uh, third housing in Lagos.
Third, I raise you. I know you like this kind of interviews, 20,000 affordable housing units in four years and three months in this same university. Since then, construction technology has moved on leaps and bounds. And in the next four years, we will be delivering the minimum, and this is all about managing expectations, the minimum of 40,000 affordable housing units, 10,000 affordable housing units year on year. We said that we have land limitations in Lagos, so we're not going to be doing 10 floors, 15 floors, minimum 20 floors, minimum 1 million flats, 2 million flats because of our demographics, 70% of our population are people between the ages of 35 and 18.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, so thank you very much. As a final word, as a final word, we are going to ask each of our presidential candidates, so who was the final, please, one, we 37 months to go, if you start, so.
Yes, thank you very much. I think, um, I think of this as such, I think it's a wonderful, I believe the function of housing is important for Nigeria for 3 reasons. One, the government housing sector is important for increasing growth. All the people, citizens, labor, the citizens, they all get more work and they all earn income from the other housing sector. That's all. The government housing sector is very important as a way to diversify Nigeria's economy. That's also very, very important. So I think the housing sector is something that should become a priority. It is also a priority because the government housing sector would be one of the ways to fight corruption in this country. One of the things that we try to protect in the public sector is the fear of growing old and not having a roof or a roof. So the government housing is part of fighting corruption. So I'd like to say the housing is very important priority for this country and that will be in Nigeria.
Thank you very much.
The standard program, which looks at what a standard housing opportunity should be for the former segment of our society is one of the flagship initiatives in our manifesto. We will not quickly accelerate its design and execution. Number two is that we will connect everything that has to expand the access to housing to the get a skill, which is what focuses on producing 900,000 diverse skills in our economy. The housing sector holds the promise that the best is there. Number three is that the economy has to grow and everyone needs to be able to be productive and competitive in the economy. So macroeconomic stability that will enable the poor to not have.
Thank you very much.
Housing under the Swahili administration started on 34, 2019, we gave a number of rights. And my comment to the people of Nigeria is that you cannot continue to vote for people who took off their roof and expect you have to, you cannot expect the president, crop of failed political leaders to provide you houses when you have no plan for your future. They destroyed the opportunity to have a house in the past and they have no plan to build a one for your future. But it's very important to tell Nigerians that we can rebuild Nigeria out of course. That's why they did China, that's why they have called ghost apartments, they did it in Syria.
They visited Syria, they visited South Korea. It is time for Nigeria to have its own housing revolution and a general revolution that will turn to the old characters. Thank you very much.
2019 is not just anything for Nigeria. 2019 is here to decide whether we want that old Nigeria, that now has 180 million homeless people, even the most less country on earth. Simply because it's 2019. Or you want a new Nigeria where it has access to a safe, affordable house and shelter. Do you believe Nigeria, every child above the age of six not only has a roof over their head, but also a bed that is their own? To make sure that all of this works, we've got to take housing as the center of our social government and our economic programs. Like in Zidongo, in Luton in the US, 80, 90% homeownership in Singapore, 70% homeownership in the US. We can also have a 70% homeownership in Nigeria. But that is in the new Nigeria. So vote for the new Nigeria, where you do have access to cheap funding, to be able to share knowledge and all that we need.
Thank you very much.
Let's see what we do in our party. In the city of Nigeria, approximately 700,000 homes for the big player. Simple math, we have 50 homes or apartments in every, this is a key. Not only that, to build a single family residence, we take six individuals to work for six months. So if we embark on seriously building Nigeria, now we are going to have a report coming, we have to explore and increase our dignity. Therefore, I'm telling everyone, please, take your time to vote for our party in the new Nigeria.
Thank you very much. Uh, when we try to leave here in the next 10 minutes, so we apologize, I would love you to take questions. However, the conversation continues on social media. All candidates are active on Twitter at this and on Instagram and Facebook. But you can follow the conversation on hashtag HousingMarket, hashtag Town Hall Meeting, hashtag Town Hall, and please follow us at chst underscore unilife. That is the Twitter handle of the sector of housing and sustainable development. May I now invite Professor Loumi to close the meeting?
This is my experience with the sun. It will succeed by releasing her name. Most of the chefs as special guests for tonight. They are certainly the best for the beautiful time. The candidates, all the candidates for the best election. We, we, we are ashamed to, we are ashamed of them and we are ashamed of our fans. We are ashamed that you are, you were able to see what is set in the universal democracy. For what we have had to do would be so bad that probably have passion for housing. And we understand that if we want to take notice of this vision, we have to pay a particular attention to housing. I want to say that for them all who know this vision, understanding the mystery behind housing is seen. And like we have been told, that is the beginning of a discussion. And even after the election, whoever from the government, the center, the university is willing to work with government to make sure that all Nigerians have assets to accommodate us. We want to appreciate as many that have been announced. Uh, there are many concerned among us, that are trying to help us to progress. Uh, we have ends of organizations among us who are very ashamed of that. We believe that there is a passion for better Nigeria and that is why you are here. And I believe God that that better Nigeria will soon see the difference. I also appreciate you coming. Thank you so much and God bless you. So we lost our photograph with the candidates. Uh, and then we will post the same. Let's start photographing so we can. We can all grab ourselves or be a very happy audience.
Ladies, give all this a question. Show more ready. Yes, uh, we trust Nigerian people. I want to thank you. Uh, as you can see on the inside, this is what they are afraid of. That's why they don't want us to participate.
Because he's so gluttony.
Because they know that we are knowledgeable about governance. We know all the lies they have told Nigerian people over these years as to why there is no functioning housing policy. This is just a debate about housing. And you can see that we are very clear about how we want to build this country out of poverty and build houses for Nigerians. It's not difficult. And I'm sure everybody learned something, including other candidates here tonight. Uh, the people who actually came to wait for, uh, the Alages, the two Alages, Alaji Muhari and Alaji Atibu. But to know they will never come to an intellectual environment where they will have a debate. But this is the reason why a national debate is important, so that everybody can learn something about what is upstairs here. And the issue of experience will be settled, the issue of integrity will be settled once and for all. And Nigerians can pick their real leaders. And that is what you saw here today. I don't know how you guys felt about the conversation here today. To be honest with you, I had to downgrade my participation because the people I was expecting did not show up. But I also had to thank our colleagues who came and shared the platform with us. And this is the future of Nigeria that you are all looking forward to. A vibrant Nigeria, a vibrant leadership in this country that can argue for every Nigerian, can fight for every Nigerian and can stand up for every Nigerian. And we hope this message will also be transmitted all over the world and every local candidate of this country. Thank you guys so much.